I would like to call this village board meeting on Thursday, October 3, 2024. Mayor Tracy, please take the road.
Uh, village president Coker.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Meritato.
Here.
Trustee Pojak.
Here.
Trustee Schroder.
Please stand and join me in saying, "Pleasure, please."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move on to-
Okay, before we start the meeting, I'd like to make a statement.
Let me complete this. Uh, trustee Schmidt, please.
No, I said, before we start the meeting, I want to make a statement.
Let me take it up. You can do whatever you're doing.
Go ahead.
Mayor Coker.
Stop. I am chair. Learn manners, you know. Is there any- do you- do I speak English?
I want to make a statement.
Okay. Later, after that, you know.
After what? I want to make one before we start the meeting.
No, no, no.
Okay, I- I propose that the board not start this meeting-
No, board, not board. I am chair.
Until-
Listen, I am chair. You have no exact power over here. Wait. There's a reason. This village is ruled by these seven people, you know. Yes, trustee Schmidt, please. Community announcement. You cannot control mayor while he's chairing as he acting- uh, chairing, you know, this meeting, you know. I gave you lot of freedom and you are abusing that.
I have no candidate.
You can't.
I don't have one. I'm not, I'm not here to-
I know you don't have, you know.
I'm not here to argue with you.
Okay.
You'll have your turn.
Community announcement. Trustee Schmidt, please.
You'll have your turn.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, October 5th, at the Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302, or contact your local district trustee. With the arrival of the fall season, the village of Glendale Heights, along with the Glenside and Bloomingdale Fire Protection Districts, would like to remind residents that it is unlawful for any uncontrolled burning of landscape waste. Fires in approved containers like fire pits are allowed as long as they are at least 15 feet from any structure, including fences and picnic tables. For more information, please contact the Glenside Fire Protection District at (630) 668-5323, or Bloomingdale Fire Protection District at (630) 894-9080.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Uh, I'm not gonna read anything. Actually, I'm gonna give my time to Tiptimere Maricato for his announcement.
Uh, next is Mike White.
We're gonna screw up the whole system here. Let me see what. I'll do this. How's this? All right. Glendale Heights Police Department, along with numerous other police departments across the country, are, um, have picked, have seen an uptick in people posting messages online about social media instead of calling 911. These platforms are not to be monitored 24/7, and in times of emergency, every second counts. Please remember that Glendale Heights Police Department cannot take crime reports over social media. In order to make a report, please contact the non-emergency number of (630) 260-6070. If you need a media assistance or have an emergency, please remember, always dial 911. Don't rely on social media. Join us at the Veterans Memorial Park every Thursday for Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you'd like to be a vendor, or for more information, please contact Tanya Mako at (630) 909-5459.
Trustee Maritato, please.
Oh, wait, we got mine now. The village of Glendale Heights is getting in the Halloween spirit. Halloween is on, uh, Thursday, October 31st, and we'd like to remind residents that trick-or-treating hours are from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Also, on Halloween Eve, we invite children 16 and under to come trick-or-treat at Safety Town Halloween for a safe, family-friendly event. Safety Town Halloween runs from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. For more information on Safety Town Halloween, please contact Tanya Mako at (630) 909-5459. Get the spooky season, get in the spooky season, and register your house for the Halloween and Heights House Decorating Contest. Register your home Sunday through Sunday, October 20th, to compete for a, for the spookiest decorated house in Glendale Heights. An interactive map with voting will be active starting October 23rd, and the winner will be announced on Halloween on the village Facebook page. For more information, please contact Lisa at (630) 909-5339. That sounds like a good idea. I like that idea.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Trustee Maritato, please.
On behalf of the village's board, village trustees, we would like to express our concern with you proposing a new appointments for us to consider within the next few months after failing to exercise your power to make appointments in the last three years. As we stand, just seven months away from the next board election, municipal election, we feel it's impossible, it's important to understand that appointments made during this period does not benefit the village of Glendale Heights, nor the individuals who is being appointed because appointments were expired at the under-year term. We urge you to refrain from making these appointments at this time. It is important to recognize the impact that such appointments can have on the village's future with the terms of a new president, new village president, on the horizon. Any appointment made now may not align with the vision of the new village president, whoever that may be. This can lead to instability and inconsistency in leadership, which could ultimately destruct the service we provide to our residents. We must also consider the message that we are sending to our residents. In light, your current situation, making significant appointments, could raise questions about the motivation behind all decisions. Our residents deserve transparency and reassurance that their voices will be heard in the upcoming election. By restraining from making these appointments, we could foster a sense of trust during this pivotal time. We, as trustees, are committed to upholding the best interests of our great village. Instead of rushing into appointments after ignoring them for three years, let us focus on supporting our current appointees and ensuring that they could be, that they could do with their resources to carry out the responsibility they have. This approach will maintain stability while allowing the village president-elect to lead us during the next term to make lasting appointments opposing the seven-month appointments. We respectfully request that you work to ensure a smooth transition to our village, the needs and concerns of our residents. This was signed by all trustees. District 1, Bill Schmidt. District 2, Mike White. District 3, Mohamed Siddiqui.
No, District 2.
District 4, Pat Meritato. NW Mayor. District 5, Justin Pojak. And District 6, Mary Schroder. I want to put this on record, that this goes on record.
What you people have been doing with this village, everybody knows. Contract, we got cricket contract, $120,000 for a season, and these trustee did not give because it did not go to their buddy, you know. So, Hellbody. And so, Hellbody's brother-in-law is sitting here, and he was fighting and calling every name, you know. He's not laughing, you know. He's not laughing.
Am I laughing?
And this is, these trustee are not serving the community. They are abusing, bringing in their families, getting paycheck, you know, at the cost of village residents.
Do you guys agree with that?
They are not helping. They are basically getting benefored and doing their personal business. And I reject their proposal, signed by these people, you know. I am acting under state law, and state law allows me to make appointment, and I will make appointment. You, uh, do you approve or not? That's your part. Next.
Okay, community announcements.
Go ahead.
We would like to remind residents that per village's call, do not take, remove leaves or yard waste onto the village streets. This will ensure our streets are clean and clear for any debris for safe driving. Yard waste collections occur on the same day as regular waste and recycling pickup. The final collection day for yard waste will be November 27th, 29th, and 30th, depending on when you, when your usual waste and recycling pickup occurs. If you have any questions, call me Public Services at (847) 981-0091. Please join, please join the village board, the village of Glendale Heights Police and Fire Personnel, and Glendale Heights VFW Post 2377 for ceremony at Veterans Memorial Park as we honor all military personnel, past and present. The Veterans Day Ceremony will begin at 11:00 a.m. on Veterans Day, November 11th. The event includes a flag and color guide presentation, rifle salute, and a tribute to our fallen warriors. Please note that all village offices will be closed Monday, November 11th, and observance of Veterans Day. For more information, please contact the village, the village president's office at (630) 909-5302. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Pojak.
I am running to formally request your resignation from the office of mayor of Glendale Heights. This request is not made lightly, but it's based on serious concerns that I, along with many residents of our community and this board, have regarding your leadership, such as mishandling of public funds, failure to, failure to address pressing community issues, unethical behavior, lack of transparency, failure to, failure to meet campaign promises, and other relevant reasons. As the mayor of our city, you hold a position of great responsibility and trust. However, it has become increasingly evident that your leadership is no longer aligned with the best interests of the citizens, citizens you were elected to serve. It is critical that we have a leader who can inspire confidence, transparency, and accountability in local government. I, along with many others in the community, believe that it would be best interest of Glendale Heights for you to step down from your position. This will allow new leadership to address the current challenges and restore the public trust in our city's government. I urge you to seriously consider this request and necessarily take steps to resign from your office. Tonight would be great. And also, I see that you made the Daily Herald. I see you're on Channel 9 TV. I don't know what's going on. Thank you.
The thing is, uh-
Street sweeping, parking-
Let me, let me, let me speak and give and show up there.
I'm not, you, I had, I had the floor now. You gave me the floor to speak.
You are doing that wrong.
During the month of October and November, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded, no parking signs are requested, posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the website, the village website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. Thank you.
Okay. I did not resign because I have mandated off my resident. If you have little shame, you should resign. You are accepting gift more than $75. That's on the record. You told me. You go to stores, get free food. You got your money campaign from Sohellbody.
You know, you're such an idiot that free food was a contest and for the car show, I won a raffle. Don't you understand English?
No, I don't.
I know you don't.
I know.
Too bad.
So, resign then. I demand you resign immediately.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna do that, just to satisfy you.
Okay.
You know what you can do.
Not me, not me. Not me, residents. Residents demand that, you know. Not just few people, you know. Whole village wants that, you know. Okay, next.
How come, how come at MSI, you, you went there, signed petitions, and they booted you out?
No, I, they signed my petition.
Yeah, you.
They signed-
I got from good source.
I don't know. Who's your good source?
I'm not gonna tell you their names.
I went, they signed my petition, secretary signed.
You went, you went to sign petitions for the mayor, and they-
Mary Schroder. Mary Schroder. Mary Schroder, please.
Stop by the Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens on Tuesday, October the 29th, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. for the Super Senior Mobile Unit. The Secretary of State will be, will be present to renew driver's license, convert existing standard driver's license into real ID driver's license, and issue free state IDs and purchase new license plate stickers. Special thank you to State Representative Diane Blair Sherlock for helping provide this service to our residents. For more information, please call the Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050. And this is not on my sheet, but I want to add this. Those of you who do not have a state ID, it's so important that you have one. If you're going on vacation and you don't want to take your driver's license, your state ID is wonderful to have, and the best part is there's no expiration on that. You never have to get a second one. There's no cost to you, and it's a good thing to have. That's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Number three, a proclamation to proclaim the month of October as Filipino-American History Month. Four, a proclamation-
Chief, chief, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, two, a proclamation to proclaim the month of October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Uh, number four, a proclamation to proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Next is C, Public Discussion of Agenda Item. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on Agenda Item Order?
Me, are you gonna ask some objections? Why are you all listening? If they have, they can say.
At Pope Wayne Avenue. I don't know who to ask, though. I was gonna, I would normally go to Doug, but could someone give us a clarification about the purpose and then what is item number 11? The Giving Glendale Heights Charity. Who is it? What is it? What's the purpose? And is it eliminating, are you eliminating the foundation? If, if you are?
I can take that if you guys want. Or Pat.
Uh, no, you could take it, Dave.
You could explain. So, the Glendale Heights Foundation is not part of the village of Glendale Heights. It's always a separate organization, started by residents. And we always support it as the village of Glendale Heights, but that's completely separate. So, that's not going away. That's still in existence. The Giving Glendale Heights Charities are nonprofit listing to 501(c)(3). Basically, as a way for anyone who submits donations to the village, whether it's donors for the senior center, or for our programs, sponsorships, et cetera, will basically go through the, the Giving Glendale Heights, so that we have better record-keeping of where that money is coming from, from donors, versus kind of a, I don't wanna say free-for-all, but so that we have a better accounting for where that money is coming from, from a, from a donor standpoint.
And then who will be in charge of it, then? Who will be in charge of, like, distributions and, and, you know, managing of it?
So, there is a board. Um, it consists of trustee Meritato, myself, Doug, Tanya Mako, Mayor Coker. Um, and so, then it kinda goes through committees and, and, um, we can kinda feel, kinda see who's around, who's for those donations and where they would go. So, like, for the charity golf classic, that'd be one of the things. So, all the money from the charity golf classic will go into the Giving Glendale Heights charity, um, which then would be then filtered out to those, those charities.
Okay. Thanks, David.
Mr. Epstein, Club Drive, Glendale Heights. I'm, uh, number six. Uh, the order, uh, ordinance to deny a zoning. I think that should be rejected, that request to deny, and I hope the people that are applying for it apply to the ADA. Remember, it's trustees here that are denying your ability because of, you have a disability within the house. I would suggest that you file a complaint with the ADA. As long as lawsuits against each of these six trustees that have voted, or are possibly voting against, we'll see the final one here for your denial. The other thing, Mr. Mayor, I congratulate you on putting up with this garbage board, including Mr. Meritato trying to cut in. Pojak sits there and cuts into you every meeting. You are in charge. I wouldn't have let Pojak say what he wanted to, because the fact is, that's not community announcements. That's his ranting and raving, as he has been doing for the last two, four years that you have been up here. I would, you know, tell him to resign. Tell him to move out of the, uh, thing, so. Yes, no, Siddiqui, you, you know, you and your brother-in-law, you know, didn't-
It's not in the agenda. Why you allowing it? Peter?
Because it was brought up.
This is, this is, if you're gonna make it a circus. No, why not? Because it's not in the agenda item. This is, this person cannot be allowed. Yes, I am telling you, yes. No, who is gonna remove me? No. No, you are making a circus of this man. Remove this guy. Mister, mister-
You are here to serve your-
Calm down, everybody. Calm down. All the illegal stuff that was being done. Calm down.
Are you finished with your comments?
No, because it's not in the agenda. Why is not it all this? You are stealing village money, residents' money. If you have little shame, you should walk or, you know.
U.S. Postal Service, Miss Maritato.
Who has a mug short in that newspaper? That's not me. That's because of you. You stealing money.
Yeah, you all, you all paying up on him to file complaints against him.
Because you are talking about you stealing it. I want to stop that. Are we gonna do this?
Ah, fuck you, bitch. Ooh. Oh. Good, good for you. I want him, I want him-
No, you get arrested first.
He punched me. I want him to soft charge.
Yes, yes. He punched him, and it's battery, you know. It should be arrested, you know.
Shut up.
I saw that. It's not a lawsuit.
You think that?
Yes.
You should be arrested.
Yes, it must be, it must be arrested, you know.
Mayor, let me call for recess.
Yeah.
I want him to soft charge.
These are the thieves and taught with some of their people, uh, friends, who are hitting my resident, you know. It's happened on the board. Yes.
George, do you want a recess?
Yes. Please, this is arrest case, you know.
Can we have a recess? Make a, somebody make a motion.
I make a motion, a recess.
No, I'm not making a motion. First, let them do this is job.
That's what I'm saying, let them do their jobs.
Yes, please do this.
We could stop the meeting while they're doing their job.
You're gonna regret this.
I'm not going to regret, you know. You will regret what you gave, you are doing, you know.
What am I doing?
You, you should have little shame, you know, you.
You started it.
Yes, you started it. I'm starting.
He's wrong.
This village does not belong to thieves, you know, thieves. Period. I am, I am here to stop corruption, you know. I'm deadly against corruption. I'm deadly against nepotism. I'm deadly against getting contacts for relatives.
Can we get back on track? Can we get back on track?
Okay, I'm asking for a recess, you know. This is not village for, you know, punching other people, you know, who are good citizens, bringing good stuff to you. Yes.
Is everybody in consensus? We'll take a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess.
Yes, five minutes, five minutes.
All right, we can, if you're ready, Mayor.
Uh, you have the, um, you have the consent agenda before you-
We'll call this meeting, we'll call the meeting back to order, then you can go ahead. I just did it, so you're fine.
Oh. Uh, you have the consent agenda before you. Work, please, Chief George Pappas, please read the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Number one, approval of regular board meeting minutes of September 19th, 2024. Number two, approval of the committee of the whole meetings of September 19th, 2024. Number three, approval of accounts payable listing of October 3rd, 2024, in the amount of $3,514,026.18. Number four, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the Second Amendment to the Laser Printer Maintenance and Supply Agreement by and between Marco Technology LLC and the village of Glendale Heights. Number five, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of intergovernmental agreement between the county of DuPage and the village of Glendale Heights in connection with the Community Development Block Grant Funds for Water Main Improvement Project, project number CD 2403. Number six, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the 2024 DuPage County CDBG Neighborhood Investment Project Implementation Schedule for the CDBG Water Main Improvement Project, project CD 2403. Number seven, a resolution to authorize the execution of an agreement for professional engineering services with Trotter and Associates Incorporated for the wastewater treatment plant biological process optimization project. Number eight, a resolution to authorize the execution of agreement for the professional engineering service with Trotter and Associates Incorporated for the wastewater treatment plant electrical modernization study. Number nine, resolution to authorize the execution of agreement for professional engineering services with Trotter and Associates Incorporated for the 2025 water treatment plant facility plant. Number 10, resolution to authorize a payment to the Illinois Department of Transportation pursuant to the joint funding agreement for the construction of West Fullerton Avenue Resurfacing Project. Number 11, a resolution to approve the authorize the execution of an agreement with Giving Glendale Heights Charities. Number 12, approval to pay request number seven to RSC Environmental Operating Company LLC for the Klein Creek Stream Restoration Project, in a total amount not to exceed Number 13, approval to pay request number nine with Utility Service Company Incorporated for the Brandon Court 1 million gallon elevated water storage tank rehabilitation and maintenance agreement renewal, in a total amount not to exceed $86,575.56. Number 14, approval of pay request number 12 to Boulder Construction Company Incorporated for the water supply facility rehabilitation project, in a total amount not to exceed Number 15, approval of pay request number 11 to Utility Service Company Incorporated for the Glen Island Road 200,000 gallon elevated water storage tank rehabilitation and maintenance agreement, in a total amount not to exceed $38,076.84. Number 16, approval of pay request number two to J.A. Johnson Paving Company for the 2024 motor fuel tax program, in a total amount not to exceed $1,545,841.64. Number 17, approval of pay request number four to F.H. Passion SN Nielsen and Associates LLC for the Camera Park Turf Field Improvement, in a total amount not to exceed $125,567.32. Number 18, approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Uh, trustee Schmidt?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Light.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business, a motion to waive first reading on new business items two through five. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item two through five? Trustee Light.
I make a motion to waive first reading on new business items number two through five.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?[1797.33]
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two through five is approved. Number two, an ordinance to waive, bid, and accept the proposal of Lane Christensen Company for the repair and rehabilitation of well number five and authorizing the execution of a contract by and between Lane Christensen Company and Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifty-eight. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifty-eight? Trustee Light.
So moved.
Trustee Siddiqui, sir.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifty-eight is approved. Number three, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a final loan closing agreement, amendment regarding the Village of Glendale Heights Water Pollution Control Facility Digestor Rehabilitation Project I E P A Loan Number L one seven three zero three one. First reading is waived. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine? I need a motion for that. Trustee Smith?
So moved.
Second. Trustee Light.
Um, second.
Discussion. Non, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine is approved. Number four, an ordinance to waive, bid, and accept the proposal of Prairie State Water System Incorporated for drilling of a new well at two one seven zero College Drive and authorize the execution of a contract by and between Prairie State Water System Incorporated and the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixty. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixty? I mean, motion for Trustee Light. So moved. Trustee Light. Ashari Schmidt.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Roll, go ahead. Hello?
I have a name.
Discussion.
I have a name.
Go ahead.
Keith, I'm sure this is for you. What is the cost of the well?
Uh, it's a little bit over twenty-one thousand hours.
And how, how long will it take?
Uh, it shouldn't take long. It has to be done by November thirtieth.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixty is approved. Number five, an ordinance to approve a conditional use to permit a body modification establishment at three twenty-five East Army Tail Road, Unit N, in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, from September nineteen, twenty twenty-four, C O W. First reading is waived. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixty-one. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixty-one? Trustee Light.
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
So, second.
Uh, discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixty-one is approved. Number six, an ordinance to deny a zoning variance to allow an increase to the maximum driveway width for sixteen seventy-four Gilberto Street in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, from the September nineteen, twenty twenty-four, C O W. First reading. Uh, Trustee?
So moved.
It's just, it's just the first reading. There's no, there's no motion. It's up for first reading.
Okay. Public discussion of agenda item. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this vote on agenda item only from public? Anybody from public? None? Executive session, there's none. Adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Light?
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Smith?
Second.
This, uh, roll, roll call, rolls are word. Roll call.
Roll call?
Yes.
You can do either one.
Okay. Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
And before I hammer for adjournment, I would humbly request Chief of Police, George Pappas, please resign. Number one, there was two murders, once committed by police officer, and first he killed his wife, and then he killed himself. This is a failure on your part to be, to provide leadership. Number second.
Tracy, on, Mayor. Tracy, was there, there was a vote on it, right?
There was a vote.
Okay, so the meeting is adjourned. So you.
Yes, so meeting is adjourned.
Yeah. So second.
Open up the committee at home meeting for Thursday, October third. Mary Schroder is very, very upset tonight with what's going on. She asked me to take over for the committee at home. So I said, Mary, no problem. I'm sorry this happened tonight. I'd like to call this commercial, committee at home meeting on Thursday, October third to order. Will Tracy please note who is present?
So noted.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Mike Light.
Uh, weekend.
Weekend?
Yeah.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Uh, committee reports. Glendale Heights Golf Club Committee.
Uh, no report, but I was on state of Turkey shooters, November the second and third, but it's all sold out. So, that's good.
There is waiting list.
Historic Committee.
Uh, I'm holding my report till the end for my weekend.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance Committee.
No, no meeting.
Parson Rec Committee.
Keith, I want to say, uh, great job you and your staff did at this place for all our summer programs.
Thank you.
Everything went smooth. No complaints, not that I heard of. But, uh, great job you and your staff did and volunteers.
I'll pass it along.
All right, thank you.
Property Enhancement Committee.
No report.
Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
No response.
Discussion regarding, there is none. Other, Mike Light.
Me, okay, that's me. I just wanted to kind of give a rundown on my entire last weekend, which was a phenomenal weekend for the village. Um, I think, I had a report on it, the cops and bobbers fishing tournament. That was a fantastic event that had, I, I can't fish. I'm, I'm challenged in that spot. So for me, I was amazed at what the kids were able to do, you know, with the help of some of the parents. And some of the parents actually got help from the kids. That was a really great event. George, do we know what size the biggest fish was that was caught?
I thought it was four pounds. Yeah.
It was just under five pounds. Huge, huge out there. But a great, great event. Um, also, it, um, right after that was the harvest fest that we had had with hayrides, bags, a chili eating contest, yeah, and, um, or chili cook-off, sorry, and a hot wing eating contest for which I got involved in. And my bad stomach, I ended up taking second place. And when I donated the winnings to the little girl that just joined, she was amazed. She was shocked that, you know, I got a bad stomach, I can't eat all that stuff. She can. But that was a, it was a great thing with, with everything that we did over there. And then we had the very same day, we had the historic open house. Uh, we had about sixty-five residents that came through and visitors that had a lot of comments about what they had seen. So many of them had said they had never been inside the historic house. If you haven't had the time, take a few minutes and go to the next open house that we have. Uh, moving on to Sunday, that was a busy day. That started at basically close to nine o'clock in the morning for me and went on till four o'clock, almost five o'clock that afternoon. And then Sunday was a fantastic day. We started out with the, uh, the garage sale, which had record number of tenants. How many do we have in that, Keith, for the garage sale?
I think the last count was ninety-four.
Ninety-four people for the garage sale. There was a lot of stuff up for sale. Uh, and at the same time, we had the, uh, the Glendale Heights Car Show, which was a fantastic turnout. We had a hundred and ninety-eight registered vehicles, um, and a roll full of crafters and vendors that, you know, everybody could go shop and down and check everything out. Um, I have to give a big shout out to Mark Radabaugh, who created a, a program that was able to make this an efficient, easy program for registering and for voting, even voting online. It was really a fantastic thing. Um, I have to thank also, I have to thank Keith, you did a phenomenal job. Jessica, thank you. Jazz, Rich, Frank, um, our trophy girl Sue, Gary, Bill, Jennifer, um, and the Glendale Heights Public Works Department, uh, for the toucha truck. They did a great job of bringing them all out there, showing the kids what can be done with these vehicles and trucks that we have. Um, the police department for coming out and spending time with all the kids and the residents. They really got a kick out of looking at the, uh, the squad that we had out there. Uh, the Glenside Fire Department with, um, games to show, uh, dexterity while working in, uh, dark, um, dark, smoky places, you know, because they give you goggles and they tell you to put the letters in the, in the spot where they belong. And it's really difficult to do. And the Carroll Stream Police Department also for bringing, um, the rollover vehicle out, which was a, really a neat thing to see if you hadn't seen it before. Take a few minutes, next time it's out there and ask to see a demonstration. And most of all, for all the members of the parks who made the entire weekend come together seamlessly with moving tents from one location to another location, with getting everything accomplished in an amazing feat of all by itself and time record, you know, that, I was amazed. I was absolutely amazed at what they were able to accomplish, accomplish. But I just want to say thank you to everyone that participated in all those events. They were really, really great events and the residents loved them. Thank you.
Mr. Siddiqui.
Yeah, I, I just want to add, I just want to commend the public works, especially Jeff, uh, your department. Uh, I've been noticing whenever I have something in my district and I send you an email, you, Brian Meritato, Mike Meritato, respond me right away and take care of that. So I really appreciate that. Residents are very happy, especially with the patch of all the roads, which we are in really bad conditions. So thanks for, and really, uh, great job done by your team. Thank you. And at last, I just want to add that Chief, you are doing a phenomenal job. Don't listen to anything. You and your department are doing a phenomenal job. So stepping away or resigning, don't even think about it. Thank you.
Okay, next is, uh, public comment. Anybody from the public?
Michael Antiveros, resident of Glendale Heights. What happened at the last village board meeting, and especially tonight, is an embarrassment for the residents of Glendale Heights. When I'm elected village president on April first, twenty twenty-five, this will stop. I am determined to bring much-needed professionalism and focus back to Glendale Heights leadership. We must put real community concerns first, rather than allowing personal conflicts to derail the agenda. We need to ensure a unified front amongst the trustees and myself is key to better governance. Prioritizing residents' needs, especially for seniors, and issues like taxes and infrastructure should be and will be our top priority. With the upcoming changes in leadership, especially with the village president, three trustee positions, and the village clerk, it's crucial that these individuals work in harmony, ensuring that they focus on what's best for the community. More importantly, we must maintain trust and promote transparency. Unified leadership can make a huge difference in creating an environment where decisions are made thoughtfully and with the best intentions for Glendale Heights residents. Now, Peter, I know you're saying to keep it civil, which I've always done, professional, and I ask the question straight out. So I'm going to proceed with my next one. Um, there's another concerning situation, especially with such serious allegations and calls for resignations for Robert Berlin, the DuPage County State's Attorney, George Pathis, our Chief of Police for the Village of Glendale Heights, and Doug Fleck, Acting Village Administrator for the Village of Glendale Heights, by Mr. Kokar himself. If Mr. Kokar is publicly making these statements and demands while facing felony charges himself, transparency and accountability are key. Charlie Kokar owes the public an explanation. His rationale for asking these officials to step down and why he refuses to resign despite facing charges himself would be essential. Sir, you have the floor.
Mr. Antiveros?
Yes, sir.
Number one, you mentioned unified leadership. This village has been ruled in last thirty years under unified leadership. Everybody knows, whole world knows, USA knows, that these people have been stealing village money. That is unified leadership. That's not unified leadership. That was unified thieves. Say thief. Number second, resignation. I am non-white who has been indicted, number one. Number two, you filed false police report with the same Glendale Heights police report under the same chief. You, you, nothing happened to you. There's the other lady, Cheryl Fawn, last name, I believe. She filed false police report against me with the same police, with the same chief. Nothing happened. Other things, same false report. Mike Light, he filed against me that I kidnapped him with the same police, with the same, same chief. Nothing happened. I am the first Democrat who's sitting here. Seven are Republican. And your guy, Berlin, Bob Berlin, is Republican. And that is, he wants to save his political position, you know. That is shame on all these people, you know. I am the person who takes stand. Residents are with me. I, they have signed my petition and I got sufficient signature. So, uh, DuPage Election Commission can print my name on ballot paper. Thank you for that.
Again, are you going to answer the question as to your rationale?
If you are wise enough, you got my answer, you know.
Uh, you're sure?
I'm not supporting a thief, period. You are? Yes. We will see in the election what happened.
Again, the question was.
I gave you all the answers, you know.
I'm not satisfied with the answer.
I don't know what answer you want. I gave you all answers.
No, you did not.
Sufficient, more than sufficient answer, you know. I will see you in election. Period. I have seen you before.
We will see you in court.
Uh, yeah.
October thirtieth.
Yeah.
But you're not answering the questions as to why all of a sudden you're asking for the resignation of our village administrator.
I did.
At this point, it, it's public comment, not the back and forth. So if he's answered your questions on his own volition, it, it, there'd be no more. Then we're moving on.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anybody else?
Just, could I just make one clarification?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, clarification. Um, yes, I did file a police report. No, I never pressed charges. I just said it to be put on record that there was a grab and there were several employees and residents that saw it. So I didn't at the time wish to press any charges because I felt it would hinder some sort of a relationship that we could possibly grow at that time. So that was on, that was on the record. It was a statement. I never pressed charges. I just simply filed the report. That's all I did. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Siddiqui.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify that I am not Republican. He's mentioned that there are seven Republicans. So I'm not Republican, just to clarify that. I'm independent. I don't follow any party. I do what my conscience tells me. So if he's making a race issue or whatever the issue in his mind, that Berlin is Republican or white or whatever, you guys decide. Any common sense person, any person who has an iota of brain on the upper chamber can understand where he is going with. And I already mentioned this way ahead of time, maybe two years ago, that this thing is, he's going to make everything a race issue. So just to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next.
Good evening. Uh, Mayor, I have a few questions.
Please state your name, please.
Antonio Andrade, five nine seven Easy Street.
What is, what is your name?
U.S. citizen born in Chicago. I don't drink and I don't do drugs.
I didn't ask you, I asked you your name.
Oh, okay, just making sure.
What's your name?
Antonio again, Andrade again, for the record.
You have three minutes.
Okay. Mayor, I have a few questions for you. Are you able to answer them?
Yeah, go ahead.
I've come and gone and I don't come a lot because of all the rhetoric. I, I don't have time for it. I'm pretty sure all these people would rather be eating, having time with their family. Do you write the checks for the city for anybody that wants a job, let's say, doing cement work? cement work?
No.
Um, can you fire that cement company?
No.
Can you fire George Pappas?
I told him in a very humble request, now this is up to who? Up, up to him.
So you can't fire him?
No, I gave my decision.
Can you hire me for any?
This, uh, I, I, this, my decision has to be, I mean, uh, approved by these thief, these thug. They don't want, they don't, they want to.
Can you hire me for any position in this place?
No, I cannot hire any.
Okay, so you can't hire, you can't fire, you can't write checks, you don't have the checkbook of the administration?
No.
Then how are they seeing you're crooked? That's the question I have.
They are idiot, they are thief, thug, so they want to keep their.
Transparency.
They, they want to keep what they are doing.
We want transparency, like he said, I want transparency. So I just want to make sure that you don't write the checks, you can't hire and fire at all for this city.
No.
Why do you put up with this? God.
These are thief, as I mentioned, I have proof for everybody.
Bless your heart, bless your heart.
Everybody, proof. Trustee one, trustee number two.
So who writes the check? Who writes the checks?
The, trustee Siddiqui, what he has done is felony.
Understand.
And I talked with Bob Berlin.
Mayor, real quick.
And he did not file charges against him, I went to his office.
I understand.
I said, this is the law, this is a state law, this is a village law.
Understand.
He cannot do what he was doing.
Let's keep this civil.
I only have three minutes.
You are uncivilized person over here.
Just shut up. He's talking right now.
He was talking, this Mexican, you know, he called.
I know.
You know what?
Okay.
This is a racist thing over here.
So, so Mayor.
He has no shame.
Oh, my gosh.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, you showed the desire too, you know?
Consider this.
Good evening, time.
Audience, consider this source.
Ma- Mayor, please, please, focus, focus. I understand you get upset. I, I get it, they, they should get it. I understand you get upset. Uh, let's shut up, hold it down a little bit, with all due respect, I don't mean to disrespect you, sir. So who writes the checks? For the village? Who actually will sign a check on, on buying something?
Basically is, uh, I believe, uh, village acting administrator.
Why acting? Why are you using the word acting? Why don't we have an administrator?
He's, I, I, I'm going to appoint, you know, village administrator and I talked with, uh, Mr. Pappas, I sent him text message.
Okay.
He said, okay. Then I called him, uh, manager, our H R manager, he came to my office.
Antonio, your time is up, now please sit down now. Anybody else in the audience?
So if you, if you can't get a, a, an administrator, and if you do, they have to pick it, don't they?
No, 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 I have to acquire it.
I have a motion to adjourn.
And a motion, wow.
I need a motion.
So we're not going anywhere because of everybody?
We can't, we, we got to finish.
All right, anybody else? This is getting ridiculous.
Ed Pope, Wayne Avenue, I got two things.
Because you are sitting here, that's the reason.
I'm not talking, you don't belong here.
Number one's for Keith.
Go ahead.
Keith, now that the senior center, uh, upgrades are almost done, uh, can we go back into looking at, uh, naming rights for the room for Gina?
Right after we finish the entire center, yes, we will.
Okay. The second, I'd just like to say, I, I, I'm not going to attack or go crazy here, but it was so disappointing to see that Daily Herald article today. If you talk to any person in our village, you talk to any other village, George, I'm sorry I have to bring you up, but he is the greatest chief we have ever had. He is born and raised Glendale Heights, he has bled for this, he is a highly decorated chief, he is respected by his, by his police officers. I'm in the Citizens Police Academy right now, having the time of my life because they're so well trained. You got to stop bringing this crap to the public if, if, and then bringing someone like George, most highest, most ethical person I've probably ever met into your drama. I understand you're not getting your way or not winning or things aren't going your way in court and, but bringing George into it and Doug, those are, those are inside housekeeping issues, uh, but I, I'm so disturbed by this, I cannot tell you. And George, I'm sorry you have to go through this because it's, it's an embarrassment to our village because you are one of the most highest character people I have ever met. And I wasn't going to say anything because I didn't want to drag it out and what happened here tonight is, is a shame, but damn it, stop doing this.